Good morning, Rockdale County.
Good morning.
We are glad to be with you here again this morning. I'd like to call this meeting to order and we will start with our invocation and pledge by the Honorable George Levitt, who is our Rockdale County Coroner.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you.
Heavenly Father, we come now in the name of Jesus, we come now praying for our county, praying for our leadership, praying for our country, asking that your hand of grace and mercy be upon each and every one of us. We thank you that Rockdale is the great county that it is. Father, we pray and ask that you make it the beacon of light, that the rest of the state and the country may see how great this county is. We pray your guidance to our leadership, to this Board of Directors, to our commission, Lord God, we just ask your grace and mercy, lead us and guide us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today, we have under special recognitions and presentations, we have a presentation from Director Michelle Azariah.
Good morning, Chair Viness. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I am here on behalf of Finance and would like to present to you the financials as of the end of January 2025. I hope you've had a moment to review them. We are within good standings. We look at it on a 12-month basis and on average, that equates to about 8.33% per month, which would leave us with a remaining balance of 91.67 desirable. Of course, there's variances and if there's ever variances that come up, we will explain that. In the blue area that's highlighted, the first area is EMS. So that is above that 8.33%, and that's because it's paid on a quarterly basis. So instead of just one month of expense coming out, it's got the three months of expenses coming out. Similar to that, you can see on Agencies, which are some subsidies to the health areas that we subsidize, those are paid on a quarterly basis. So while they may seem skewed now, come when we look at April, it will catch back up, but then they'll probably have that second quarter hitting as well. Another area is libraries. Under libraries, they are paid on a monthly basis, but the amount there signifies two months of payments. And economic development, that signifies, in the beginning of the year, we went in with 400,000. We've made a payment which is also a quarterly payment, and that will also correct itself. But with these subsidies that we provide, they, if they are paid on a quarterly basis, they are going to appear skewed when we look at the monthly amounts. Do you have any questions for me?
Can you tell us what falls under, I think it was Agencies for Health?
Agencies, absolutely. So under that, we have burial fees, a contribution to CASA, a contribution to Viewpoint Health, and a contribution to the Coalition as well as DFAX.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we have public comment. All right, first, we have Ms. Josie Dean.
How y'all doing today?
Hi.
I just want to thank them for passing the five commissioners. We've been fighting for that five commissioners for a long time. So every time they get in, y'all start sending these seats, y'all forget about the five commissioners. We've been sitting ducks forever, with just her, you, and all that. We need to change. We need five, four. When Rockdale first started, they had seven. And Rockdale didn't have the people that we got now. So that lie, we ain't got enough money, we ain't got enough this, that's a lie. This time, we got to vote on it, and we need five commissioners. Then, just like the pastor was saying, why can't Rockdale be the greatest city, county in America? That's what I'm looking for. All this stuff going on in the country, racism, all that stuff. I was here when Rockdale was racist. I was here when citizen newspaper would let them put anything they want to put in there and write whatever they want to put in there, because they didn't have to put their name to it. I remember coming to Rockdale County, and I got my daycare, and they sit there and they throw trash in front of my little black children, that I had to start carrying a gun around my house to make sure my black children was protected. We don't need that anymore. They kill Vanessa's child, they kill my child, they kill your child, they kill you, your husband. Who want to go through that? We supposed to be America. We supposed to be one for all and all for one. We don't stop there and let all these foreign countries come in here and rule us. Now they own America. Now Africa owns America, not America. So what are we going to do about it? We cannot allow to sit here and do the same thing in our county. When things happen in our county, we don't need Vanessa to be vindictive. We don't been there, that's why we got rid of her last time. We don't need her to be vindictive this time. We got to do what's right for everybody. Her whole school basically blacks. What if all, they say your children can't go to school with the black kids no more? What happened then? Your school going to fail. Our kids going to fail. So what, what are we going to do about it? It don't sound good, it don't feel good, but it's the truth anyhow. Our stuff is so old in our county, we had that courthouse for 40 million. Now it's 140 million. Where that money going? We can't even get people, even in the commission, we can't even get free buildings for our children. But y'all gave the Boys and Girls Club all that money, and Boys and Girls Club get money from everywhere. Why money? We got a nonprofit, we can't get nothing from y'all. And we service kids. The county can't serve so many kids. So what are y'all going to do about it? Y'all say y'all love these kids, y'all love this, but we don't have nothing open up free for the kids. Vanessa has something, why can't nobody else have something the same day the county have it? She can't house all them children in the county stuff. Y'all be blessed.
Ms. Janine Mumford?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I called the phone numbers that Jennifer Redbridge provided me last, at the town hall meeting, to get the information regarding Mountain Valley that you guys gathered. I called on Thursday, March 21st, to get the information. I still have not received a returned phone call or anything to get that information. Additionally, I want to make sure Chairwoman Viness, that I understood you correctly when you responded nothing to my inquiry about the, what were the plans for Mountain Valley? So I want to be clear that we no longer have to pay the fees for stormwater for services that we have not been receiving, nor in the past or in the future, since we know that stormwater is a fee for service and that stormwater is not a tax. Correct?
We have Stacy Bonner Lewis.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Chairwoman, Post One and Post Two. We continue to celebrate Women's History Month, and this is the first time ever we've had an all-female Board of Commissioners. I want to acknowledge our former Chief Fire, Fire Chief, who was my friend, Mary Ann McDaniel. She's here today in support of me. As the former and first Equitable Business Opportunity Officer for Rockdale County Government, I want to say that this has been truly a labor of love. I have met some incredible women business owners over the last past year, and I want to thank the entire business community that came out to advocate and have been calling and texting me, asking me about my position. Commissioner Williams, I appreciate you supporting me and seeing the value that I brought to the position. I know at the last meeting, you said that you were not in favor of eliminating the position, and I truly thank you for seeing the value that I was adding as the Equitable Business Opportunity Officer. Chairwoman Smith, Commissioner Smith, I appreciate you as well. I know you attended several of the workshops that I hosted, specifically How to Do Business for Rockdale County and EBO, What's Your Approach to Succeeding at Government Contracting, and then last month, you attended the workshop, which was really good. It was on Unlocking Success, The Power of High-Ticket E-Commerce, and Elevating and Scaling Your Business with the Power of Technology and AI. I know all the individuals that attended thought that the workshop was really good, because that's what they need to help with their business, and your feedback is a gift. And I quote, "Great event for the community, thanks for having it." And so I appreciate you as well. Chairman, Chairwoman, you have stated numerous times that your job is to cut the budget, that that's why you were elected, and I appreciate that as well. I too am a resident and a homeowner out here. You have eliminated, led the charge to eliminate my position and other positions, and also you opted in for the House Bill 581. So the good news is, come September, I'm sure I'm going to have a reduction in my taxes. So I appreciate your effort, and I will be paying attention as a homeowner. Out of the huts of history, shame I rise. Up from a past that's rooted in pain, I rise. I'm a black ocean, leaping and wide, welling and swelling, I bear in the tide. Leaving behind nights of terror and fear, I rise. Into a daybreak that's wondrously clear, I rise. Bringing the gifts that my ancestors gave, I am the dream and the hope of the slave. I rise, I rise, I rise. An excerpt from one of my favorite poets, Maya Angelou, "I Rise." Thank you.
We have Nocenti Uhudi.
Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm not asking you for anything today. Smile. I got a solution. I would like to ask you to put stormwater on your agenda and to see if you can, you gave me a definition, Madam Chair, of what contingency funds were, and you have the power to help us out with contingency funds. You don't have enough money in them to redo all of Rockdale County, but all of us are kind of having the same problem, except new bills. So this is what I'm asking for Mountain Valley Estates and for any of the others. Can you take contingency funds and use them to trench rather than re-pipe and guide water away from homes? Because if you can do that, then that puts residents in a position not to lose their homes, and then we can put in our own flowers and stuff for the vegetation needs to sustain the soil. But we need you to trench it and guide the water away. And you don't have enough money to do everything we need done. I know that, I looked at the budget, girl. You ain't got the money. So, but you don't want the people to go south either, and I don't think it's your intention that our homes go under because of the storm. This way, we can do our part, we need you to do it, and it costs a whole lot less to trench than it does to buy those pipes and run them through the whole county. But I know you're getting complaints from a lot of people that are having the same issues as Mountain Valley Estates and some of the other divisions. The alternative to that, in being fair, would be placing stormwater on the agenda and suspending fees, stormwater fees, to any resident that is not and has not been receiving the service. That way, we not stealing from residents, because if you make them pay for a fee, for a service that they don't get, that's stealing. Y'all know that's wrong. You know it's wrong. And it's not your intent, it's the fact that we don't have no money. So you don't have no way to put the money. But you can't let the residents go south, we got to do like you do at home. When you don't have enough money for that big meal, you start cutting what's on the menu, but you still prepare the meal. So I'm asking you to prepare the meal, put it on the agenda, let's talk about it, because you really don't need to be the bad guy all the time. Okay? Right now, you're the bad guy, because you didn't tell everybody no. So I need you to help us out. And we don't got a problem. Now we got a solution. Work with me, so the people's houses don't go under. And by the way, history. All right.
Okay, we have approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as published.
I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. We have approval of the minutes from March 11th, 2025.
I move to approve the minutes as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. And next, we have Item 2025-126, Volunteer Appointments.
Yes, Item 126 with Volunteer Appointments. We have two councils this morning. The first one is Keep Conyers Rockdale Beautiful Council. The terms are for four years. And the first one is the Honorable Commissioner Tawanya Smith, Ms. Marilyn Cook, CJ Lester, Darlisha Tillman Sadler, Amanda Newcomb, Alvinise Jackson, Nala Eldridge, and Preston Baldwin. And if you would like, we'll take both of these together. And so the next one would be the Rockdale County Water Sewerage Stormwater Advisory Council with George Kelleche, Nicole Lishner, John Nix, Tom Harrison, Mark Walton, Mark Hardgrove, and Telfany Morgan.
I move to approve these volunteer appointments as listed. I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. I just want to say thank you to the community who did such an outstanding job replying to our need for volunteers for the many committees. This is the first of several boards that we'll be appointing, so we look forward to the rest of the appointments. At this time, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Okay, that brings us to new business. Item 2025-130 is with the National Recreation and Park Association Incorporated as NRPA through the Parks and Recreation Department. For Million Coaches Challenge Grant Acceptance, the amount is $2,500 with no match. The term is March 1st, 2025 through July 31st, 2025.
I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item 2025-131 is with Georgia Emergency Management Agency and Homeland Security Agency, GMA/HS. Through the Emergency Management Agency Department, this is for statewide mutual aid and assistance agreement at no cost. The term is March 1st, 2025 through March 1st, 2028.
I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item 2025-132 is with Arcadis LLC through the Fire Rescue Department for Matterport Software for Investigator Camera. This is the annual government subscription. The amount is $1,930 per year. This is for one year with option to renew three additional one-year periods. This is through the general fund and is a budgeted item.
Madam Chair, I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item 2025-133 is with Pratt Recycling through the General Services Department for Recycling for Solid Waste Collection and Disposal. This is change order number one to Contract 2021-168. It's a unit price increase in contract renewal. The new price for solid waste is $160 per haul. The previous amount was $139 per haul. It's $72 per ton. For previous amount was $53.50 per ton. The new price for glass is $605 per haul. The previous amount was $550 per haul. This is through the general fund and is a budgeted item.
I move to approve this contract as presented.
Madam Chair, I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item 2025-134 is through the Georgia Department of Transportation through the Office of Program Delivery. This is through the General Services Department for the River Trail Connector Extension, approximately five miles to connect to the existing trails at Heritage High School and the monastery. This is change order number one to Contract 2021-51. It's additional GDOT funding in the amount of $750,000 with a spliced match of $150,000. This is a budgeted item.
Madam Chair, I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. If I could have Director Hammer come up just for a minute to explain more about the trail system and the connection, that would be great.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning.
Commissioners. I'm glad to explain. Is that better?
Yes.
I'm glad to explain a lot. Is there something in particular? Do you want to talk about this or the trail system in as all?
The trail system.
Okay. So right at the moment, the Rockdale River Trail is about 10 miles. It extends from Panola Mountain Park. There's about a mile within Panola Mountain Park. It extends down Daniels Bridge Road, crosses over through South Park to Lorraine, goes underneath, goes all the way through Davis Middle School, crosses the South River, and ends at the pedestrian bridge. It's over into 12 and ends at the monastery parking lot. So from there, there's a gap, and if you start back at Johnson Park, Johnson Park extends across the road and eventually weaves its way through Old Town, comes over the bridge, over the railroad track, excuse me, over the bridge at Parker Road, and ends at Pine Log Park. So the master plan that we did many, many, many years ago is to have a trail system that can extend from one border of the county, from DeKalb County to Newton County. Newton County has worked on some of their trail systems in Oxford and Covington, some other areas, and of course, DeKalb has the Arabia Mountain Trail System, and it extends all the way to Atlanta, to the Belt Line. The global plan, if you will, is to take it all the way from the Alabama border, all the way down to the coast, and all the way up the coast to South Carolina. And the goal is that, is to make it friendly for pedestrians as well as bicyclists. It's non-motorized, unless you're at the, like a handicap wheelchair, of course, but it's for non-motorized travel. The trail system is about 10 feet wide, it's a concrete path, and we do our best to weave it through the woods as much as possible and not just follow the roadway, so it's not just a big sidewalk, but it's actually a nature outdoor experience. This section of the trail would be to connect those two gaps in the middle, that five miles from the monastery to Johnson Park. And so we're in the preliminary stages. We finished the concept, we're working on the engineering, the environmental, the studies that transportation has us go through, and this particular contract is for Georgia Department of Transportation to give us additional engineering for those, for those studies, for the concepts, for the bridges, for all the engineering work that it takes to do that five miles of trail, and they are typically an 80/20 match. They pay 80% with the local 20% match. In this case, it's coming from Spas.
Okay. And just to clarify, the Georgia Department of Transportation is funding this project at $750,000 for the change order, and then the, and then the special purpose local option sales tax, which is 1% of the 7% people pay at the register when you buy something in Rockdale, pays for the match of $150,000.
That is correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
So the, but this contract is just for the engineering and the design?
That's correct. They did a portion for the initial part, and this is to extend it all the way through.
And so what's the plan for actually do it, completing the trail?
So the timeline...
It's about a million per mile, isn't it?
It is, it is. So the total construction cost, or the total project cost is close to $8 million, with the majority of it, 80% being funded by, by Georgia Department of Transportation. So roughly about 2 million of that is for the, the concept report, the engineering, all the studies, all the bridge design, everything that they have to do for that. And then there's a portion for purchasing right away. These are the easements that will be required for the path. And then the lion's share of it, $6.5 million, will be for the actual construction of the trail itself.
And that, most of that is GDOT?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. So we're at the point for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Okay, Item 2025-135 is with Conyers Executive Office Park through General Services Department. This is a lease for office space for the District Attorney for Suites 100 and 110 at 1009 Millstead Avenue, Conyers, Georgia. This is change order number one to Contract 2023-154, the assignment of a lease and the change in owner from Conyers Executive Office Park to Rajiv Arvind Rai.
I move to approve this contract as presented.
Madam Chair, I second that motion.
All right, I have a motion and a second. And do we have a contract amount? It's not on the document here.
So this particular, excuse me, good morning again. This particular is a no-cost change order. So the, the previous owner that owned the building, they've kept our existing lease and the existing terms and existing costs, they've just changed the ownership, so we have to change the lease into the new owner's name.
I see. Okay. Thank you for that clarification. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries.
Item 2025-136 is with Ahead Incorporated through the Technology Services Department for Active Directory Subscription Software. The amount is $220,001.1. Total for three years, this is, year one is $60,065. Years two and three is $79,999.68. This is through the general fund and is a budgeted item.
Madam Chair, I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item 2025-137 is with Stormwind LLC through the Technology Services Department for TSD Training Renewal. The amount is $11,900. This is through the general fund and is a budgeted item.
I move to approve this contract as presented.
Madam Chair, I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries.
Item 2025-138 is with Comcast Enterprise Services through the Technology Service Department. This is, this is for the E91 Ethernet Dedicated Internet EDI Service. The amount is $2,992 per month for 60 months. The other amount is $2,912.10 for the EDI Plus, the $79.90 for the equipment fee, making the total $179,520, and it is for 60 months. This is through the Emergency 911 Telephone Fund and is a budgeted item.
Madam Chair, I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item 2025-139 is with Valsoff Corporation Incorporated Doing Business as COT Systems. This is through the Clerk of Court's Office for Hosted Online Index Book Services. The amount is $430 per month with a total of $17,200 for 40 months and hosted Resolution III services. The amount is $3,015 per month, making it a total of $120,600 for 40 months. This is through the G- This is through the GSCCA Fund through the general fund and is a budgeted item.
I move to approve this contract as presented.
Madam Chair, I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item twenty twenty five dash one forty is through Delta Municipal Supply Company through the Water Resources Department for water meters, transmitters, and strainers at a unit price. This is change order number two to contract twenty twenty two dash two oh three. There's a four percent unit price increase, and the renewal is through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. This is through the Water Enterprise Fund and is a budgeted item.
Madam Chair, I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries.
Item twenty twenty five dash one forty-one is a requisition for Rockdale Water Resources through the SERM Corporate Environmental Risk Management. This is RWR Engineering Staff Augmentation Support for twenty twenty-five. The amount is four hundred fifty-five thousand, and it is six months through the Water Enterprise Fund and is a budgeted item.
I move to approve this requisition as presented.
I second that motion.
Director Peak, could you explain to us the scope of this contract, please? Thank you.
Hey, good morning, Madam Chair. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
The scope of work for the SERM contract for engineering staff augmentation. Our engineering group, we didn't have any inspectors. We have a sewer rehab program going on through our engineering team, and we need inspectors to actually monitor the work that's being done from the contractors. So the staff augmentation are for those particular positions. Those are inspectors and project managers.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
All right. I have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm abstaining.
Okay. The motion carries.
Okay. Item twenty twenty five dash one forty-two is a requisition through the Rockdale Water Resources Department for SERM Corporate Environment Risk Management. This is for the RWR Sewer Preventative Maintenance Program for twenty twenty-five. The amount is two hundred fifty thousand dollars. This is for six months. This is through the Water Enterprise Fund and is a budgeted item.
Madam Chair, I move to approve this requisition as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item twenty twenty five dash one forty-three is a requisition for Rockdale Water Resources, SERM Corporate Environmental Risk Management. This is for the RWR Sewer Rehab Program for twenty twenty-five. The amount is five hundred thousand dollars. It is for six months. It's through the Water Enterprise Fund and is a budgeted item.
I move to approve this requisition as presented.
Madam Chair, I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Director Peak, would you be so kind to come back? And help explain, I know you and I have talked about eventually trying to transition out of contracts and building our skill set internally. But can you talk about this?
Yes, ma'am.
In general, even the other two contracts?
Okay. Definitely. Okay, the sewer rehab program. Now, the sewer rehab program, what we do, we actually go out, we actually go out and do like a preventive maintenance. We do CCTV inspections, which is, you know, we televise the sewer system to find any issues and problems with the sewer system. Once we find those issues, you know, with the sewer systems, the manholes, we actually, you know, create work orders to have those assets repaired. And that's the sewer rehab program. Now, what we are doing, what you and I talked about, Commissioner, Chair, is that about a year ago, I actually started creating some positions to make these positions go away, to make the contractors go away. So we actually in the process of hiring some of those inspectors. We're bringing them onboard, the manager, project managers. We actually created the positions for the area managers. So we just about have everything in place to where eventually we would be able to go away from the contract, being able to support engineering.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you very much. All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item twenty twenty five dash one forty-four is a requisition through Water Resources for SERM. This is for the RWR Asset Inventory Management for twenty twenty-five. The amount is a hundred thousand dollars. It is for six months. It's through the Water Enterprise Fund and is a budgeted item.
Madam Chair, I move to approve this requisition as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item twenty twenty five dash one forty-five is a requisition through Rockdale Water Resources for Delta Municipal. This is for Neptune three sixty AMI Annual Software as a Service. The amount is sixty-four thousand eight hundred dollars. The term is February first, twenty twenty-five through January thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. This is through the Water Enterprise Fund and is a budgeted item.
I move to approve this requisition as presented.
Madam Chair, I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item twenty twenty five dash one forty-six is a requisition through Rockdale Water Resources for Ferguson FEI Georgia Water Works Hydrants. The amount is eighty-seven thousand seven hundred thirty-nine dollars and thirteen cents. This is through the Water Enterprise Fund and is a budgeted item.
Madam Chair, I move to approve this requisition as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries.
Item twenty twenty five dash one forty-seven is a requisition through Rockdale Water Resources for Pro Fence LLC. This is the installation of a ten-foot, ten-feet-of-eight-foot commercial galvanized eight Georgia chain link fence. The amount is sixteen thousand seven hundred eighty dollars and forty-three cents. This is through the Water Enterprise Fund and is a budgeted item.
I move to approve this requisition as presented.
Madam Chair, I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item twenty twenty five dash one forty-eight is a requisition through Rockdale Water Resources for Pi Barker Engineered Solutions for the Repair Compressor Model. I will let everyone just read that. The amount is fifteen thousand four hundred ninety-eight dollars and thirty-nine cents. This is through the Water Enterprise Fund and is a budgeted item.
Madam Chair, I move to approve this requisition as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item twenty twenty five dash one forty-nine is a requisition through the General Services Department for United Maintenance at the J P Card Gem. This is for two new HVAC unit replacements. It is ten tons. The amount is forty-nine thousand two hundred seventy-one dollars and twenty cents, and this is through the C I P Fund.
I move to approve this requisition as presented.
Madam Chair, I second that motion.
I just want to say, good timing with the summer coming.
Yes, absolutely. You don't want to do with that.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries.
Item twenty twenty five dash one fifty is a requisition through S H I Technologies, the Technology Services Department. This is for Proofpoint Core and email protection for the F Secure and Renewal for twenty twenty-five. The amount is thirty-two thousand seven hundred sixty-two dollars and seventy-three cents. This is through the general fund and is a budgeted item.
Madam Chair, I move to approve this requisition as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item twenty twenty five dash one fifty-one is a requisition through Dice's Solutions for the Technology Services Department. This is for Emergency Responder Add-on for one on-premise calling. The amount is thirty-eight thousand one hundred twenty-nine dollars and fifty-two cents. This is through the E nine-one-one Emergency Fund and is a budgeted item.
I move to approve this requisition as presented.
Madam Chair, I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Aye. The motion carries.
Item twenty twenty five dash one fifty-two is a requisition through Safe Belt for the Planning and Development Department for Inspections, Plan and Review, and Building Official Services for twenty twenty-five. The amount is two hundred forty-nine thousand dollars. It's through the general fund and is a budgeted item.
Madam Chair, I move to approve this requisition as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second, and a note for the record that this amount is actually going to be like an account, almost like a
Like a drawdown of the purchase order. Okay. Yes.
So that would be a maximum expenditure?
That is correct.
Okay. Very good. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries.
Item twenty twenty five dash one fifty-three is an expenditure request for Safe Belt through the Planning and Development Department for inspections, plan review, and building official services in the amount of fifty-three thousand eight hundred twenty-four dollars and sixty-eight cents. This is through the general fund, is a budgeted item, and is submitted for ratification.
I move to ratify this expenditure request as presented.
Madam Chair, I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. And I would like to note for the record that that expense is from services last year that we incurred. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item twenty twenty five dash one fifty-four is an expenditure request for Core and Main for the Water Resources Department. This is for soft copper K two being used to connect and repair water service lines. The amount is twenty-two thousand seven hundred seventy dollars. This is through the Water Enterprise Fund and is a budgeted item.
Madam Chair, I move to approve this expenditure as requested.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries.
Item twenty twenty five dash one fifty-five are budget amendments to the Finance Department. A is the Water Enterprise Fund. The amount is four hundred eighteen thousand eight dollars. This is a decrease from fund balance and increase the salary and benefits. B is with the general fund. The amount is forty-nine thousand two hundred seventy-one dollars. This is a decrease from repairs and maintenance through General Service and increase, GS, and increased contingencies, I apologize, for the reclassification of expense. Two is fifty-four thousand three hundred fourteen dollars. This is a decrease from contingency and increase to vehicle repairs based on insurance claim for repair. And three is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. This is a decrease from credzy and increase contingency.
I move to approve these budgeted amendments as presented.
Madam Chair, I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item twenty twenty five dash one fifty-six are amendments to the Rockdale County Classification and Pay Plan through the Human Resources Department. So would you like to take these collectively this morning, or maybe segment by segment, or item by item?
Item by item in this first one of re-classed positions.
So we will go with item A, which is removal of position. Number one is Web and Digital Content Administrator for the Public Relations Department. This position is currently vacant.
So I move to approve this.
That's what we're doing?
I'll second that motion.
To remove it?
That's fine. No, no, no. I just want to make sure what's what we're doing.
Are we doing each one like that? You need a vote on each item?
If you want to do each one line by line like that, or maybe one through six, and we take seven individually? Would that be the desire? Okay. So I will read one through six and then ask for a vote. How about that? All right. So two is Community Engagement Coordinator for the Public Relations Department. This position is currently vacant. Three is Executive Assistant in the Fire Rescue Department, currently vacant. Item four is an Assistant Chief EMS Training Fire Rescue. It's currently vacant. Item five, Fire Logistics Maintenance Specialist in Fire Rescue, currently vacant. Item six, EMS Quality Assurance Officer, Fire Rescue Department, currently vacant. So if you would like to vote on the removal of the positions of item one through six.
I have a question. Is it possible to get talent management to come and explain if there's going to be any loss in service from eliminating any of these positions, please?
Director Holmes is here this morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Commissioner Smith, you had asked about loss of service. Any particular position that you wanted me to reference?
If there is.
Okay. The Web and Digital Content Administrator, that was a position that was approved from the previous administration, so that position has been vacant. That was housed in Public Relations. That actually services being outsourced, from what I believe, to a contract services. The Community Engagement Coordinator position, also those services are now being handled via Public Relations? Yes, no? Okay. The Executive Assistant to Fire Rescue and Chief Robinson is here. Newly appointed, Fire Chief has done an assessment, so that role was from a previous administration as well. The current Fire Chief has stated that will not be needing that Executive Assistant position, so he's reallocated those funds and responsibilities. They do have administrative services in the office already. So that position will be covered. The Assistant Chief EMS Training, he has also restructured the Training Division, so that position was vacant as well. The Fire Logistics Maintenance Specialist position, they actually had an additional position. So in this particular case, they will still have three, so those services will also still be covered. And then the EMS Quality Assurance Officer, also that position will be covered as well. Those services will still take place with fire. And that had to do with the EMS Division, which is also being reallocated and reused, repurposed at this time. So those are the six positions that we're removing today.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So.
You made a motion? Did you make a motion?
No, not yet. The motion that was made was for just number one, that you're going to take one through six collectively, correct?
So I move that we make these amendments for one through six of the Rockdale County Classification and Pay Plan.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I second the motion.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Okay. And then item seven is the Equitable Business Opportunity Officer through the Finance Department. This would be the removal of the position and submitted for ratification.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to ratify the removal of the Equitable Business Opportunity Officer.
Can you do the same for this position, please, ma'am?
I can. So the EBO Opportunity Officer position, and you'll see that a little bit later down in the amendments. The current policy, as well as the ordinance, does state that we do have to identify someone as the EBO Administrator. Those roles and responsibilities will be taken on by the buyer position. And you'll see that later on when we do an amendment to that position in the paying class plan.
Okay. I second the motion.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Nay.
The motion carries.
Okay. Thank you. B, do you want me to read the rest of them and take them collectively? The rest of the?
Or Tony, if you want to generalize while you're there?
Right.
Pause. Like, I'll just stay here.
Sorry.
Okay. I can go ahead and go through. Director, are you okay with?
I'm okay with that, and just make two minor changes while you're up there. Number fourteen, the laboratory technician is a grade change, eighteen to nineteen. And then under new position, instead of administrator, it should be administrative. So I'll make those
That's correct. That opioid position is an administrative coordinator. Okay. We're going to Section B, which is, which are reclasses. And collectively, or I can just go through these. The Program Director for Stepping Up, that's item number one. That is additional responsibility, so there is a change in the pay grade. Item number two is a reclass from a Deputy Director from EMA going to an Operations Manager. Item number three, which is RDOT, that is a Maintenance Worker One. That is a cleanup adjustment for a Maintenance Worker One. The position is actually an Engineering Tech. Item number four is also in Transportation. Project Manager position being reclassed to a Civil Engineer. Item number five, also Transportation. That's their Traffic Sign and Signal Maintenance Manager being reclassed or changed to a Field Inspector. Item number six, that's a B O C position. That is the Executive Administrator. That's a change in the title where we're removing the executive from the title. And instead of Executive Administrator, it will be an Office Administrator. There were also some additional changes to the job description. Item number seven is a reclass from a Development and Business Relations Manager. That position will now become the Licensing and Permitting Manager. That's in Planning and Development. Item number eight is the reclass of the Executive Assistant Positions between the Departments of Planning and Development, Finance, and RDOT. All of those positions will become Administrative Managers. No change in pay grade. Item number nine, ten, and eleven are all with the Sheriff's Office. Those are updates to titles and job descriptions. Changing your Jail Lieutenant to the Lieutenant Sheriff's Office, your Jail Sergeant to the Sergeant Sheriff's Office, and your Jail Corporal to the Corporal Sheriff's Office. Item number twelve is a reclass, changing the Compensation Analyst to a Human Resources Generalist, allowing the Human Resources Generalist to not be restricted to just compensation. That position will also assist with employee relations and the Title Six Administrator function. Item number thirteen, which is the Buyer, which is a pay grade change. That position will take on additional responsibilities that will fall in line with the responsibilities for the EBO Administrator. And item number fourteen, a reclass, which is the Laboratory Technician, taking on additional responsibilities, going from a pay grade eighteen, I believe, to a pay grade nineteen. going from a pay grade eighteen, I believe, to a pay grade nineteen.
That's correct.
Okay, so those are the reclasses in Section Number B.
Do you want to keep going?
Okay.
Okay.
Item number C, which is in the Accountability Court. This is a request to do a reclass, which is an update in the job title, from a Surveillance Officer Accountability Court to a Chief Surveillance Officer. Section Number D is an update and reclass to a job description, changing the Economic and Community Development Manager to the Business Relations Manager, and that's in Planning and Development. Item, Section Number E, reclass and new job description. It's taking one of their part-time laboratory assistants and making it to a full-time laboratory assistant, too. Section Number F, these are updates to general job descriptions for your Sergeant Sheriff's Office, as well as your Corporal Sheriff's Office. So taking that job description and updating the job responsibilities. Item number three, under Section F, is changing a Laboratory Assistant to a Laboratory Assistant One in the Accountability Court. That allows for them to have tiering, so they'll have Laboratory Assistants One and Two on their org chart now. We're going down to Section Number G, and in Section Number G, these are title changes only, so no changes in pay grade, no changes in the job descriptions. That's the update for the Director of Government Affairs, the Director of Public Relations and Marketing, me, the Director of Talent Management to the Director of Human Resources. Actually, three, four, and five, all of those under Section G are updates based on us changing the name of the department from Talent Management to Human Resources. Going to Section H, which is an update for the Project Manager. We had a Project Manager job description. This one is specifically for Finance. It does add in some technical components for Finance as far as accounting software. And then the very last one, which is the new position, which is where she noted the change. That is going to be a grant-funded slash opioid-funded position, and it is an Administrative Coordinator. It will service in the Accountability Court program, and it will support the opioid abatement program. It's a part-time position. And, oh, a couple more cleanup items, I'm sorry. I'm reading them. Section Number J, these are no changes. This is where we move things within the org charts. So the Sheriff's Office is moving some things around within their org charts, and this is just moving one position, Certified Sheriff's Deputy, from one Home Department to another. Then we have another where they're moving a position, another Certified Sheriff's Deputy, from Home Department thirty-three twenty-three to thirty-three twenty. And Home Department codes are just the individual departments where the Sheriff's Office operates. So they have Administration, they have Court Services, so this allows them to be in their proper function. They're going to be moving four positions from the Sheriff's Office from thirty-three twenty to thirty-three twenty-six. They're moving their Property Evidence Tech from thirty-three sixty to thirty-three fifty. And then the Pearl Program Coordinator will also move from Home Department Code twenty-three oh-one to thirty-three twenty. And again, those Home Department Codes are individual departments within our org chart, so. That concludes the updates to the paying class plan.
Okay. Ma'am Chair, I move to approve Items A-one through A-six and Items B-through J. Excuse me, and to ratify item A-seven as presented.
So if you could, oh, I apologize, Madam Chair. If you could just modify your motion to approve Items B-through J as presented.
Okay.
As long as the board is...
Everybody go with that? Okay. Ma'am Chair, I move to approve Items B-through J.
As presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Last item is twenty-two-five dash one fifty-seven, a budget amendment through the Finance Department in the General Fund.
Good morning again, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This budget amendment actually goes with the previous item and serves as a cleanup. And what this is doing is moving funding from Finance, Public Relations, Fire Rescue, and Emergency Management into contingency in the amount of five-hundred-and-twenty-one thousand five-hundred-and-twenty dollars. It is also increasing the Chief Superior Court salary and benefits by eight-thousand three-hundred twenty-nine. Transportation salaries and benefits by eleven-thousand seven-hundred eighty-four. Accountability Courts by fifty-three thousand nine-hundred and fifty-two. For a total of five-hundred-ninety-five thousand five-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars.
Can you clarify what you said a minute ago about five-hundred-and-twenty-one thousand?
Sure, absolutely. And I can start over if that works better. That might just make a little more sense.
I'm just looking at this document.
Absolutely.
Which is the five...
So the amount that was taken out of the departments that I mentioned, Finance, Public Relations, Fire, and Emergency, and we can go line by line on those. One-hundred-and-one thousand four-hundred eighty-nine dollar decrease from Finance on salary and benefits. One-hundred-and-thirteen thousand nine-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars from Public Relations salaries and benefits. Three-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand four-hundred-and-sixty-eight from Fire and Rescue salary and benefits. And forty-eight thousand seven-hundred-and-six from Emergency Management salary and benefits. Again, all corresponding with the previous items. That has a total of five-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand five-hundred-and-eighty-five dollar decrease. Now, of that five-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand five-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars, five-hundred-and-twenty-one thousand five-hundred-and-twenty went into contingency. That's a positive number. Eight-thousand three-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars was added to Chief of Superior Court for salary and benefits. Eleven-thousand seven-hundred eighty-four was added to Transportation for salary and benefits. Fifty-three thousand nine-hundred and fifty-two was added to Accountability Courts for salary and benefits.
Okay, and those total the same amount?
Yes, ma'am.
And just for clarity, in our Contingency Fund, our budget is set up a little bit different than it has been in years past, where the positions that are vacant, when the snapshot was taken last year, we do not have funding for, and the funding therefore comes out of contingency.
That is correct, yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, and that's why we've listed out so that people in the audience and citizens would be able to delineate a little bit better where those numbers are coming from. But our Contingency Fund is a pretty tight fund that we're using to address any of those positions or changes, and it's a very limited opportunity or...
Yes, ma'am. The contingency line item is where we're sweeping any of our savings, so that when things come up or any changes happen, we're able to account for them properly.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
All right, so I have a motion and a second.
Not yet.
Not yet? No, not yet. Sorry, we need a motion.
That's all right. Ma'am Chair, I move to approve these budget amendments as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any further questions? Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Aye. The motion carries. All right, at this time, we'll move into Board Comment.
Sure. Good afternoon, everyone. Is it, yep, oh, almost, I'm sorry, still good morning. Yesterday, we attended the Tea that was presented by Public Relations, who did an excellent job. Great execution of our chair's idea. And it was very nice to see local business owners and women being celebrated here in Rockdale County. And also, that's it, I just want to say that. And also, if you, when you can't find sunshine, I just want to remind everybody to be the sunshine. That's it.
You do a good job of sunshine.
Thank you, girl.
So the Tea yesterday was really lovely. Public Relations did a phenomenal job at sponsoring that and getting that all organized and together. Two weeks ago, when we had our last board meeting, I asked for requests on people who wanted to share with me women that they knew that I could recognize today. And so I have two women from the, that were submitted by Nick Lynn, the Assistant Chief Fire Marshal. And this is the letter that he wrote about these two women, and maybe they could come up front.
Hello, everyone.
Good morning.
Hello.
Happy to have you.
It's a blessing to be here.
Dear Sir, Madame, I am writing to express my profound admiration and appreciation for Jasmine Johnson and Xena Wilson, whose steadfast commitment to fire safety education has significantly benefited our community. Their dedication to providing exceptional service has ensured that numerous individuals are now better equipped and safer due to their initiatives. Jasmine and Xena truly embody the spirit of going above and beyond in their profession. Through their empathy and commitment, they have not only informed the public about fire prevention, but have also motivated those around them to prioritize safety in their everyday lives. Whether they are interacting with schools, coordinating community outreach programs, or directly assisting families in promoting fire preparedness, their unwavering passion for serving others is evident. Their efforts have undoubtedly saved lives, mitigated fire-related hazards, and enhanced the bond between the fire service and the community. Their ability to engage with individuals and deliver essential information effectively showcases their expertise and commitment. Thanks to their work, Rockdale County is a safer environment. In recognition of Women's Month, it is particularly vital to acknowledge the remarkable contributions of women in fire safety education and public service. Jasmine Johnson and Xena Wilson exemplify leadership, resilience, and the transformative power of education in affecting change. Their relentless dedication merits the highest commendation, and we are privileged to have them as champions of fire safety. I invite you to join me in honoring these exceptional individuals for their outstanding contributions. Their enthusiasm and commitment continue to establish a benchmark for excellence in service. Regards, Nick Lynn, Assistant Chief Fire Marshal.
So I told myself I wasn't going to get up here and cry, but here I am, just listening and stuff. But I think I can speak for myself and Mrs. Wilson to say that we're very fervent about fire and life safety education. I want to say thank you to Nick Lynn for that heartfelt message. Thank you for the current administration for keeping us here. And I also want to definitely give a special thanks to Chief Matt for giving me the opportunity. I never thought that I would want to work in fire rescue, but when she presented me with the opportunity and told me what I was going to be doing, it just took over me. And I'm so thankful to have the job that I have and be in the position that I have that can help educate the community. So thank everybody here, and thank you all for all the opportunities. I appreciate it. I want to give a handout.
So those are my comments for today.
Those are excellent comments.
Well, thank you to Nick Lynn.
Yeah, thank you. To our Fire Marshal.
Somebody who listened to my homework assignment and responded.
He was probably a really good student in school.
I don't think anybody's surprised.
That's right. Okay, so a couple of notes. I am excited about the appointments today and thank all the people that were appointed for their commitment to excellence in Rockdale County and for their time and service that will be forthcoming. I did want to say that the request today about hearing more from Stormwater is something that will be part of this process, and the intent for this committee is really for us to have a stronger focus in that area and oversight and support with recommendations to the board. So I feel like this will be a really good thing for us to reestablish this. We have had the Water and Sewer Authority before. This is a little bit different. It will be a committee with similar focus, but with the addition of the Stormwater asset as well. I did want to mention that I went to the Cherry Blossom Festival and helped out at the Walk of Heroes booth, as well as the Georgia Sports Council booth that is setting up the Cajun Festival this weekend. So if you're looking for something really fun to do, we have a new event. And the Georgia Sports Council actually started right here in Rockdale County, and they're working to recognize athletes around the state. One of the ultimate goals is for us to be able to recruit higher levels of talent in sports activities for people in the community, as well as around the state. And so I love the focus of the Georgia Sports Council. This event will be, will feature four live bands. They'll have gumbo tasting, different chefs that are going to have presentations, as well as food trucks. They'll have activities for children, and they have tickets online for the Cajun Festival that will be at the Georgia International Horse Park. So I'm really excited about the fact that we're getting a new event here in town. The promoters for the event are the same people that did the Eggtoberfest last year, and that's egg, as in green egg, toberfest. And that event was a lot of fun. We would love to host that event in our community. It's a pretty cool activity where they bring about a hundred to a hundred and fifty different green eggs out, and the different chefs and people that have the booth actually have to cook it on a green egg, whatever they present. And I'm going to tell you, there was such a wide array of appetizers and main entrees and desserts. It was, it was a pretty fun place to be. So anyway, we're glad to have that quality event out here this Saturday from eleven to seven. I hope you'll join me out there. I am still in need of two volunteers if anybody would like to help with that event greeting during the timeframe. That would be an awesome opportunity to get out in nice weather. At this time, I just want to thank the rest of our Rockdale County team for all their hard work. The Tea yesterday was wonderful. We were so glad that we could see a lot of people come together, which is one of my goals, bringing connectivity to our community. And I've already had probably ten requests to make sure we do it next year. So it will be expanded next year for more availability in the community. But thank you, Director Memes, to you and your team. All right, at this time, do we have a need for executive session?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay, so I... Oh, I'll take that afterwards, thank you. At this time, at this ti... Excuse me, at this time, I'd like to adjourn the meeting. Do I have a motion?
Yes, a motion that we adjourn the meeting?
I second the motion.
All right, thank you. A motion and a second carries. Have a good day.